People who've lost their lives in the last sixty days because of this scourge. And we thank you, Father, for the healthcare workers and all those who support those team efforts to bring health and healing to all families that are impacted. What we pray for the families that are bereaved. And today, Father, we do take a moment of pause to remember the contributions of our dear NA who has passed into eternity. Lord, we ask for your comfort for her family and all those that she touched upon. We also pray tonight as we also dedicate to remember Mr. Herman Bullock, who also made tremendous contributions to our community. And we thank you for the gift of his life. We also appreciate, Father, all of the people who work every day to ensure that our city is safe and protected. Thank you, Father. That community spread has not impacted more than it has in the Twin Counties. And help us to continue to remain safe and, Father, distant from each other physically, but together in love and the Spirit. We ask for your guidance and wisdom. In your name we pray. Jesus, thy Savior.
Amen.
I'd like to ask the clerk, Uroco.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walker.
Move ahead.
Daughtry.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Okay.
Moves us to item number four on the agenda, which is the approval of amendments to the regular scheduled meeting of the City Council held on April thirteenth, 2020. Do I have a motion? So move. Moved by Joyner.
Second.
Second vote. Knight, is there any discussion? If you have no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed or like, sign. Matter is approved. Item number five is consideration of the amendments of the regular scheduled committee of the whole meeting held April thirteenth, 2020. One, item one, is time parking limits near in, near Event Center Brad Curr by consensus. The council authorized staff to place consideration of time to parking limits near the event center on the next City Council agenda for formal consideration. Item two is the recommendation for public service awards. Cynthia Jones, back in sentences, the council agreed that consideration of funding proposals be placed on the April twenty-seventh, 2020 council agenda for formal consideration. And item three is closed session, which was a personnel and attorney client privilege. The recommended action is to approve the amendments and the recommendations. Do you have a motion? Moved by Knight, seconded by Blackwell. Any discussion? There being none, then please approve by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed or like, sign. Matter carries. Item number six, community update by county manager, Rochelle, the small town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Today, we still would like to remind everyone that all commission and board meetings will continue to be canceled until the governor's executive order is lifted. In addition, neighborhood meetings, Citizens Academy, and the Rocky Mountain area youth council meetings also remain canceled. To actively encourage black youth to focus on being counted in the 2020 decennial census despite the coronavirus COVID-19 global pandemic, the National Coalition on Black Civic Participation, Black Youth Vote Civic Leadership Empower Building Program, and its Unity Diaspora Coalition 2020 Campaigns National and State Based Partner Organization launches hashtag Count Me Black this week. Youth Census 2020 Week, Count Me Black Youth Week begins today and runs through Friday, May first, 2020. While this week has been designated as such, and you might not be a part of this group, if you have not done so, I encourage you to fill out and send in your 2020 census form. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. If you have questions, you can contact one of the city census outreach members at two five two nine seven two one one eight one, or visit 2020census.gov. Per the city council's direction, there is a moratorium on all utility disconnections until further notice, and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are struggling and need help with your bill, please contact the Business Services Center. We have sent letters to our state and federal delegation requesting their support for revenue stabilization funding for the city, and shared our perspective on why the city should be included for assistance. We, as all the other local governments in the state and nation, have not received any good news on this front. However, with the support of our local government, government partners, we are pushing forward, hoping that we will receive stimulus support from both the state and federal governments. During this pandemic, I would like to remind you, if you can, stay home, and know that the city of Rocky Mountain is working to ensure you continue to receive excellent municipal services. To stay informed of all the assistance available to our community, I encourage you to visit our website at rockymountnc.gov, or connect with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So item seven is presentation and recommendations. This is, we can't trick you, but we're going to do our best. Would it be better if I just walk down here and read it, and then we could do the photo op? Okay, proclamation of the city of Rocky Mountain. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas 2020 marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the signing of the National Preservation Act, which established the legal framework and incentives to preserve the nation's heritage, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that have shaped us as a people. Now therefore, I see Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mountain, to hereby proclaim May 2020 as Preservation Month. The city of Rocky Mountain call upon all the citizens of the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance.
Whereas Kids to Parks Day was organized and launched by the National Park Trust and is held annually on the third Saturday in May, and whereas May sixteenth, 2020 will be the tenth national celebration of Kids to Parks Day, and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitus, hypertension, and high cholesterol, and whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I see Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim May sixteenth, 2020 as Kids to Parks Day. And the city of Rocky Mountain call upon all the citizens of the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. In witness thereof, I set my hands to the seal on the twenty-seventh day of April.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
Proclamation of the city of Rocky Mountain. Whereas public works is an honorable profession involving a variety of challenging and rewarding careers essential to efficient and effective operation of government, and whereas the efficiency of the dedicated and skilled personnel staffing, the public works and water resources departments are influenced by their attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform, and whereas these men and women contribute considerably to the quality of life for the citizens they serve, their commitment to excellence in the variety of skills are an invaluable resource for providing the various services expected by our citizens. And whereas the public works infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the city of Rocky Mountain to help our communities grow and prosper. And whereas these public works facilities and services could not be provided to the community without the dedicated efforts and unwavering commitment of the public works and water resources professionals responsible for planning, designing, building, operating, maintaining, and managing the transportation network, stormwater system, the water supply, the water wastewater treatment plants, the water wastewater distribution and collection systems, maintenance of the cities of motor vehicles and equipment fleet, and the delivery of solid waste services, which are essential to the services for our citizens. Whereas the public works week strives to inform all citizens about the quality of people in government who work tirelessly every day to strengthen the bond that keeps us all connected, their commitment to high ethical standards, and the value of the services they perform, to encourage excellence among public employees, and to promote interest in civil service careers. And whereas this year's theme, the rhythm of public works, speaks to the essential nature of public work services and the supportive everyday quality of life. Now therefore, I see Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mountain, hereby proclaim the week of May seventeenth through the twenty-third, 2020 as Public Works Week in the city of Rocky Mountain. Just stood this way.
Yeah. Yes. That is fine.
We'll close our mouth.
All right. Please ask. I was due. Thank you.
Right, proclamation of the city of Rocky Mountain. Whereas the sixty-ninth observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May seventh, 2020 with the theme Pray God's Glory Across the Earth, based on Habakkuk two fourteen, and whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the first Congress in seventeen seventy-five, and the United States Congress in nineteen fifty-two approved as a joint resolution that the president shall sit aside and proclaim a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as a national day of prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation at churches, in groups, and as individuals. And whereas the United States Congress in nineteen eighty-eight by public law one hundred dash three oh seven has amended established an act to provide for sitting aside the first Thursday in May as the date on which the National Day of Prayer is celebrated. And whereas leaders and citizens of our community, cities, states, and nation are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God. And whereas recognizing the love of God, we, citizens of the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, now more than ever during this national COVID-19 pandemic treasure the freedom to gather in prayer, exercising reliance on God's power in the face of challenges and threats, asking for His blessing on every individual in our city, this community, state, and nation. Now therefore, I see Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mountain, do hereby proclaim May seventh, 2020 as a day of prayer in the city of Rocky Mountain, and commend this observance to all citizens. Okay, item eight brings us petitions to be received from the public. Please note, complete the citizen's sign-in sheet and provide to the security officer prior to speaking. Please limit the presentation to three minutes, and time will be monitored. You'll state your name and address. That would be helpful. Thank you, sir.
Tom Harris, eight oh one Joshua Clay Drive, Rocky Mountain. I reside in Ward Six. I come today regarding a couple of items. One, regarding the budget process that the newspaper had in their paper recently, as well as outlined in item number eleven on today's agenda. I want to read what the newspaper quote, wrote, and I quote, "Prior to the approval of the budget, the copy of the proposed budget has to be made available for public inspection during normal, during normal business hours at the clerk's office." I would just like to find out if a date or dates have already been determined when such information would be made available at the clerk's office.
We'll discuss that when that agenda item comes up.
But will there be sufficient information for the public to have such opportunities to personally make an appointment to review the information?
We won't review it publicly with any individual. What typically happens is that copies of the budget are made available in public places like the library, the clerk's office certain will have one, and, and will be also online.
I know with today's environment, trying to have that information available, we got to adhere to various rules and policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also would like to ask regarding the budget, if the operations of the Rocky Mountain Event Center are going to be clearly itemized in a format that can easily be reviewed. If you recall back in January this year, I came to you about my concern for the fiscal year-end report, June thirtieth, 2019, that the operations of the Rocky Mountain Event Center were blended. I hope that the budget will be segregated so that we all can see the Rocky Mountain Event Center, and I hope the, the audit report for June thirtieth, 2020 will also not be blended, but have a separate notation. Last but not least, when will we be able to do live broadcast on local TV?
I just received the information about the proposal from the staff. I haven't had a chance to review it myself. So the process will be, I'll review it, and then I will pass it on to the city council for their consideration.
Two months, three months, possibly earlier?
No, I just require you to answer, but just want to let you know, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's my last petition unless, okay, last petition. Item nine is consideration of the amendments and recommendations from a regular scheduled planning board meeting held March tenth, 2020, on review of requests and recommendations by the director of development services or his designate. This public hearing is relevant to the following rezoning requests recommended for approval and found in compliance with comprehensive plan by the planning board. The request by William Carr Keller to rezone plus or minus twelve point six two acres located on the corner of River Drive and Carr Street from R ten and I one to R dash six MFA. This is deferred from the April thirteenth, 2020 agenda, so this time I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have a presentation on the?
I'll just elaborate a little bit more than what's on there. Like you said, twelve point six two acres, corner of River Drive and Carr Street, split zone R ten and I one, which is your industrial to R six MFA. Planning board met in March and recommended unanimous approval. To give you another sort of summary, the proposed development there is a six-bed assisted living facility, and of course, through approval and then construction review, all our stormwater sewer erosion control and development regulations will be addressed before construction.
Are there any questions?
Questions.
Yes, sir, Councilman Bullock.
Since several of you have toured new to our city, do you feel, do you guys feel okay and safe with the flood situation in that particular area?
In that particular, yeah, you're right. There are some, there's some flooding, flood zones closer to the Sunset Park side, but if you're familiar, we, just a reminder, we adopted new state flood regulations this past year. So as this comes through, I'm going to make sure that elevation certificates and all that's in place. As far as access, making sure, you know, if, if one site, this, one side of the site is subject to flooding, making sure there's access both sides in case of emergency. So we'll handle that all through our development review process.
Thank you.
Question. Yes, sir, Councilman Bullock.
So has the neigh, has the neighborhood around that area, the neighborhoods around that area been included yet, or where is there input in that process? I know in times past, there have been objections to elder care being provided in those communities. So I'm really excited to see if there's been a change of heart for a sixty-bed facility being introduced. And also, can you also talk about parking elements?
I don't know if you don't mind. Where is the entrance going to be off River Road or off Carr or somewhere else?
The entrance, if I believe correctly, Harris, Harris Street, Harris Street will be the alternative, River Road will be the main, but Harris will be alternative. So yeah, that, that more northern, western side is more prone. But to Councilman Blackwell, it's your question, sent notice out, and I don't know for sure if, if the ALH hints are, are reached out to the neighborhood groups, but usually they are notified, and we didn't have anybody come to planning board or, or contact us with a negative feedback or anything else.
Well, I'm, I'm personally happy to see that we have more institutions like that in our communities. I'm excited about an institution like that being more in our historic communities, and shows all of us that all communities are postured for all types of growth. And at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve that at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
I would comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was going to say a question. Reference to, was there any opposition from citizens in that area for, for preservation? I'll wait.
While we wait on that, so assisted living project, if you have the approval by the Department of Health and Human Services, ultimately D F S, in the state of North Carolina, and I assume that a certificate has been issued, or is this a preliminary gesture to make sure that land that's being optioned could be used for the development of an A L F?
Yeah, I would speculate that they are attempting through this hurdle first, or they've done it simultaneously. I haven't heard any otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just the same as Councilman Blackwell mentioned about, was no citizen opposition, no opposition for the historic preservation for the Falls Road Neighborhood Association. I know almost twenty years ago, twenty-three years ago, when I was not on the council, I petitioned this planning board and council for adult daycare on Falls Road, and it was, the neighbors were adamant against anything from bed and breakfast, adult daycare, group homes, family care home, childcare centers, et cetera, et cetera. Even went too far as a lawsuit and went up to the Court of Appeal, correct, there. And so I'm very well pleased, almost twenty-three years now that we're looking in the direction of accepting institutional care for our frail population. And so if Mr. Black will make the motion, I'd be glad to second the motion. It, it shows me that Rocky Mountain has progressed and moving towards the city on the rise. Thank you.
So do you have numbers of the public who want to comment on this project? That's great, okay. With that, I will receive a motion from Councilman Blackwell.
I move to approve this request to adopt the comprehensive plan recommendation of the planning. Second.
Seconded by Knight. Is there any need for additional discussion on this matter? Okay. I'm sorry, is that Councilman Miller?
Apologies, I'm coming.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, that, that being said, all in favor, if you indicate by saying aye. All opposed, by the same sign. Okay, motion carries. Item ten is consideration of tax releases and/or refunds. Schedule A are taxes under a hundred dollars approved for release and/or refund by the city manager, and Schedule B are taxes over a hundred dollars recommended for release and/or refund by the city council. Recommended action is to acknowledge receipt of report from the city manager of Schedule A, taxes approved for release and/or refund, and two, approved release and/or refund of taxes listed on Schedule B.
So moved second.
Moved by Knight, seconded by Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, item eleven is the consideration of the fiscal year 2021 budget review works, work session schedule. What is proposed is that Wednesday, May sixth, 2021 through 2025, I proposed CIP document distributed to the city council. You know, city manager, it might be better if you walk us through this, and it's your schedule, and I've, I've cleared all the dates, but you might, you might be able to provide texture other than what I would do.
Okay, is Ken out there by the chat? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll ask Ken Hunter, who is our budget and evaluation manager to come in. Ken works very tirelessly on preparing the budget for council's considerations, so certainly want him to review the schedule review.
Thank you, good afternoon. The budget review schedule that you have before you is pretty similar to the budget reviews that we've done in the past in terms of the number of sessions and their scheduling. We do work with the fact that typically when we present the budget, it's typically in late, in mid to late May, so we have to work around the Memorial Day observance. On the sixth of May, you will receive the proposed CIP document. That will be distributed electronically or in paper form to members of council, and we plan to review that on May eleventh as part of the committee of the whole meeting. And we do this, of course, in advance of the budget to provide an idea of what our capital plan is for each year. plan is for each year. The budget document, the proposed budget document, will be distributed to city council on Thursday, May twenty-first. And again, that will be done electronically or in physical form. On Thursday, May twenty-eighth, we have planned that a presentation in the council chambers will be made of the city manager proposed budget fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and if necessary, possible work session that will take place at four P M. And that is one week after the budget document is submitted to you for review. Subsequent work sessions are also scheduled for Monday, June first, Tuesday, June second, Thursday, June third, I mean, sorry, Thursday, June fourth, and Monday, June eighth, if necessary, I'm sorry, Wednesday, June tenth, if necessary, my apologies. The public hearing on the budget is scheduled for Monday, June eighth, and this is required by general statute that there be a public hearing during a regularly called meeting of council. As of now, we anticipate the adoption of the budget to taking place during the council meeting on Monday, June twenty-second.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hunter?
We don't know if it's for Mr. Hunter or our manager, but being new to the city council, and it's my understanding, since a lot of questions come up from the city council and a lot of input from city council comes during the retreat, obviously, we, the retreat was canceled. What opportunity do we have to provide for that? I haven't been contacted. I don't know if fellow council members have been contacted or made the initiative to contact, but how is that going to work and if I'm understanding the whole budget process incorrectly?
If I'm, if I'm understanding your question, you're absolutely correct. The retreat was canceled, and that certainly would have been an opportunity to hear from council in terms of initiatives, if there are any.
Oh, yes.
So, so at this point, what we're relying on is really feedback throughout the year from both the staff and myself in terms of a proposed budget. The city manager's budget is a proposed recommended budget. And so that's why you will see in the schedule at least four opportunities and maybe even more for council to provide their input, because after I present the budget to you, it becomes your budget. And so that's how we're managing that. If there is something in particular that you have a concern about, then certainly I would appreciate hearing that. We're getting close now to balancing the budget so that we can keep the schedule. But if there's anything in particular that you have a concern about or want to see, I would ask that you share that with me as quickly as you possibly can.
Madam Manager?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
In this budget work session, for those of us who have participated remotely, will these sessions be handled in the same way I'm hearing feedback?
Yes, yes, it would, right. And of course, this is, you know, in the month of June, we're not quite sure where we might be in terms of social distancing and life. But if we're still under the same orders as we are today, or if it's council's pleasure, then we would conduct those work sessions here in council chamber, which would then allow remote conversations between members of council who want to provide their input remotely so that the remaining council could hear that input as well.
A secondary question. Given that the city manager and the various department heads normally prepare their remarks for these budget sessions ahead of time and deliver them at the work sessions, will those remarks be prepared, maybe even videotaped and scripted ahead of them time, so that we would have time to review, make a set of them, and formulate the questions that we want to ask?
That has really gone back and forth. You might recall, my very first budget that I presented to the city council was presented in chambers and very openly. And subsequent to that, we went back to the way it had been done previously, which has been in small group discussions. So however the council would like to receive that information, you know, we're certainly happy, you know, to provide that.
Thank you. I just want to be sure that we have adequate time to reflect on presentations by yourself and the department head. It's before we're at the point of saying yea or nay, I have no concern, answer.
Right, well, I do want to remind you that the department heads won't be making the presentation of the budget. I will make the presentation of the budget, and between Ken and I, we'll answer any questions you might have. But we've tried to space out the sessions, particularly from the time that you actually receive the budget. You won't really be called to discuss the budget until some week, a week, at least a week later. So we're hoping that that provides you adequate time. And then, starting on June first, you will have an opportunity to have the council work session.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I would also add that I certainly will be available to meet with any member of council about anything that's in the budget outside of the work sessions.
I had a follow-up to my question.
Go ahead.
As we are during our one speaker today, will this be made, will this be posted to our website when we receive it, or when is it going to be posted to our website so that citizens can review it?
Once we distribute the budget to the council, you know, that is the first and foremost step here. We won't post it simultaneously. I wanted to make sure that the council has that budget before it becomes a public document. So soon thereafter, it will be posted to the website as well as placed in the library. And we will also have a copy in the city manager's office and budget and evaluation office as well.
So as we sit now, is the library even open? As we sit today, is the library even open? I think it's closed, too.
I'm not sure. You know, again, we are anticipating that some of these places will be open. If they're not open, then we'll have to rely on the online version of the budget. But typically, that's where it is.
Any other questions for Madam Manager? And I will entertain a motion to consider and approve the budget review work session schedule. So move. Moved by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Knight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item eleven passes. Item twelve is consideration of resolutions honoring and remembering the lives well-lived of Herman Boone and Benjamin Mayo Body Senior. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Moved by Dolger, is there a need for discussion? Be in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, so we're good. So I'm going to read these into the record, if that's okay with everybody. I think it'd just be a nice touch. The resolution honoring a life well-lived and remembering Herman Boone. Whereas legendary high school football coach and the inspiration for the movie Remember the Titans passed away in his home in Alexandria, Virginia, at the age of eighty-four years old on Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty nineteen. And whereas Herman Boone, known in North Carolina as Ike, was born on October twenty-eighth, nineteen thirty-five, to his parents Frank and Daisy Boone, and was one of twelve children. And whereas Herman Boone attended Abraham Lincoln Elementary School and went on to graduate from Booker T. Washington High School in Rocky Mount, North Carolina in nineteen fifty-four. He was an outstanding athlete, and his desire to excel took him to North Carolina College in Durham, North Carolina, which later became North Carolina Central University, where he received his bachelor of arts and master's degree in nineteen fifty-eight. Whereas Herman Boone's teaching career took him to Luther H. Foster High School in Blackstone, Virginia in nineteen fifty-eight, where he coached football, basketball, and baseball. It was in Blackstone, Virginia that he met and married his wife Carol. Whereas in nineteen sixty-one, Herman Boone returned to his home state of North Carolina to continue his teaching and coaching career at E J. Hayes High School in Williamson, where his football teams amassed an astounding record in a nine-year period of ninety-nine wins and eight losses, and was recognized in nineteen sixty-six by Celestic Coaches Magazine as the number one football team in America. And whereas in nineteen sixty-nine, Herman Boone resigned from his position after being informed by Williamson School Board that the town of Williamson was not ready for a black head coach, and accepted the role of assistant football coach at T C Williams High School in Alexandria, Virginia. And whereas the city Alexandria, Virginia integrated its school system in nineteen seventy-one and appointed Herman Boone as its first consolidated football coach over a legendary white coach with several years seniority and his steadfast following. It was here that it pulled together to solidify a diverse coaching staff and unfocused group of young boys in the most powerful football team in the state of Virginia, leading the team to a thirteen-and-o record, winning the state championship and earning a number-two national ranking. Whereas this extraordinary football season at T C Williams High School was the basis for the two thousand award-winning film Remember the Titans, in which Herman Boone was portrayed by Denzel Washington. And whereas Herman Boone was a motivator of young people of all races, and as a teacher and retired football coach, was a true symbol of social transformation. And whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Rocky Mount are desirous of honoring the memory of Herman Boone and commemorating the recognition he brought to the city of Rocky Mount. Now therefore, now therefore, being resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Rocky Mount hereby honor the life, memory, and accomplishments of Herman Boone and share the laws felt by his wife, children, family, and friends, and recognizes the life of Herman Boone as a life well-lived. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be forwarded to the Boone family, adopted this twenty-seventh day of April twenty twenty. Resolution honoring the life well-lived and remembering Benjamin Mayo Body Senior. Whereas entrepreneur philanthropist Benjamin Mayo Body Senior passed away peacefully at his home at the age of ninety years old on Tuesday evening, March thirty-first, twenty twenty. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body Senior was born December sixteenth, nineteen twenty-nine, at his beloved Rose Hill Plantation in Nash County, North Carolina, to his parents Nicholas Bunn Body Senior and Lucy Valera Mayo Body. And whereas prior to establishing himself as a giant and family-owned Body Knoll Enterprises, the largest franchise of parties restaurants, Benjamin Mayo Body Senior graduated from Rocky Mount Senior High School in nineteen forty-eight, completed a postgraduate year at the St. James School in Agastow, Maryland, and then attended the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body Senior was a faithful Christian and lifetime member of First Presbyterian Church of Rocky Mount, where he served as a deacon and elder. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body was a co-founder of Body Knoll Enterprises, which currently operates nearly three hundred and fifty parties restaurants, E and E Land and Development and other ventures. Whereas Benjamin Mayo Body Senior served as president, CEO of Body Knoll Enterprises for many years before serving the last twenty-five years of his life as chairman of the board. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body Senior was an active and contributing member of this community throughout life, serving on numerous boards. The Boy Scouts of America renamed their camp monitor on the Pamlico River as Camp Body in honor of Mr. Body and his brother Nick, in appreciation of the loyal support and dedication provided to the scouting program. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body Senior was the recipient of the twenty-fourteen Juvenile Award for Morehead Planetary and Science Center, which recognizes outstanding contributions to science education in North Carolina. Throughout the sponsorship of field trips and other educational activities, Mr. Body provided enrichment opportunities for thousands of North Carolina schoolchildren. And whereas Benjamin Mayo Body possesses those rare and tangible qualities of leadership, courage, and compassion that generated admiration, he will be greatly missed. And whereas the mayor and city council of Rocky Mount are desirous of honoring the memory of Benjamin Mayo Body Senior and commemorating the recognition he brought to the city of Rocky Mount, now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Rocky Mount hereby honor the life and memory of Benjamin Mayo Body Senior and send sincere sympathy and condolences to the Body family and his many friends. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread upon the pages of the minutes of this proceeding, and a copy shall be forwarded to the Body family, adopted this twenty-seventh day of April twenty twenty. So leads us to item thirteen, which is consideration for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, public service awards, approximately eighty-four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Presentation of the committee of the whole was made on April thirteenth, twenty twenty. The United Community Ministries proposed to be allocated seven thousand to the Rocky Mount Edgecom CDC, thirty thousand to Boys and Girls Club of Tarver Region, thirty thousand to Ripple Effects, seventy thousand one hundred and forty-four. Recommended action is to approve funding request, and I don't know, Madam Manager, if you have, somebody wants to make additional presentation?
No, sir, we'll entertain.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Knight, second by Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Blackwell? I mean, not needs. Dolger.
(laughing).
Yes, sir, Dolger.
Madam Manager, I emailed earlier last week, or late last week, I think, and requested if there were any, if all these entities were good with the, with the city update on everything.
Yes, sir, and I responded to your email and indicated that they are.
Oh, I thought the email said that you weren't sure and you'd get back to us.
No, I actually did say that they are all in good stead.
And back in twenty eighteen, this council was aware that I sent, in that email that I sent, there was a presentation that was taken off of the committee of the whole in twenty eighteen, I actually attended. But it was taken off, and the purpose was to establish a policy ensuring and accountable objective results-oriented and fair process for submitting, reviewing, and approving nonprofit agencies funding requests, including all contractual agreements. I think that needs to be put back on the agenda when we discuss it, talk about it, because I'm not so sure that was done in this situation.
No, it wasn't, because as you know, that in twenty eighteen, that matter was tabled.
But it's still a good policy to do that. We've got to be fair and equitable with everybody, including nonprofits. Then I'm going to move over to, specific on April eighth, twenty nineteen, which is about a year ago, the city attorney gave reports around the attached credits and unwinding of attached credits for the Douglas Block. Subsequently, the Rocky Mount Edgecom CDC received four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They received, we conveyed, we, the city conveyed a vacant lot on East Thomas Street in that, within thirty months of the date deed was delivered. There's supposed to be a building permit, construction would begin with eighteen months of the building permit. To my knowledge, that has not been done. So, which leads into the question I had earlier, there, you know, there's some things that need to be, that are due to the city, which I think is the land, because it was deeded for a contingency on that. And to my knowledge, nothing has been done on that property as of yet, and that was the contingency for that to happen. I do have still the constitutionality of giving nonprofits from the city. And I'm not, we, the C B G doesn't say that we have to give to nonprofits a certain percent or just up to or not to exceed fifteen percent. And within that, based on the criteria that we were given, it has to be included in nonprofit with the federal five oh one C three taxes status. A government indie or faith-based organization directly serve Rocky Mount neighborhoods or households, and at least three years of experience assisting low and moderate income could be one of those three. Based on the reports that you provided, this council, and to the state of North Carolina Utilities Commission, in three weeks, we've had a hundred and ninety-three percent increase of residents who are eligible to have their electricity disconnected, and a hundred and twenty-five percent for small businesses. As we know, the city council voted not to do that, as well as the governor's order. But everyone is going to, owes the money, will owe the money eventually, whether they get on a payment plan or not, but the payment plan, if I recall, from the governor would be about eight months, I think. So so far, late fees have totaled about thirty-three thousand dollars. Our past due account has increased to one point seven. Our past due account has increased to one point seven million dollars, which is an increase in three weeks of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna have, we have people who've lost their jobs, we've had businesses that are shuttering. Um, a lot of these have little prospects of paying the money back to the city, uh, as hard, even as hard as they may want to work, and at some point, this city, this city is gonna disconnect utilities. I propose that we take this money that is supposed to go to the CDC and give it to one program, which could go and help the citizens of Rocky Mount who can't afford to pay the utility bills and will not have their, this goes to elderly, the people recently lost their jobs, and to, um, uh, children will, they're disabled. And I think that would be a good use of this money.
I will.
I'm supporting, I think of that.
I, I will try to, um, take, take the issues that you, uh, have raised, uh, one by one, so forgive me if I don't, uh, touch them all. Um, so this is, uh, community development block grant funding, and there are certain criteria that the HUD, uh, federal program sets forth for municipalities such as Rocky Mount, which is an entitlement city to follow. And so the criteria here, um, and I think we shared that information with you as well, is criteria that has been, um, approved and accepted by HUD as the staff evaluates each of the applications that, that come forward. So there is a process in place where, uh, these nonprofits are, um, they go through an application process, the staff evaluates that application, and then we, of course, make the recommendation to you for approval. So to the very right of the table that you have in your packet, it tells you the number of points that were scored for each of the applications. Um, you will note, um, that we are recommending eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, because that is the fifteen percent of our allocation for CDBG as required by, uh, by HUD. Uh, you will also note that, um, the recommended funding certainly, in some cases, does not come up to the requested funding from, from the agencies as well. So we are adhering to the eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. You'll also note, um, in the same table, that we have been notified because of the pandemic that we will be receiving additional funds through the CARES Act. And so, um, you'll see where my sister's house, um, will also be receiving, um, additional money for that. The CDC, actually, the Rocky Mount, uh, CDC that you were referring to is not a part of the CDBG public service funding, but it is being recommended for funding at a later time, um, for the CDBG economic development, um, program, as well as the, uh, UCM Community Shelter. We are funding, recommending to fund the Bassett Center with these, uh, funds. In terms of the constitutionality, I would have to ask the, uh, city attorney to, to comment on that.
Excuse me for turning my mic to you.
I understand, I think the audience wants to hear you, right?
Yeah, that they, that some of the other people cannot hear you. Uh, thank you. Uh, I had heard some romblings of this, um, earlier. In order to appropriate to a nonprofit, which is what you're doing, you have to appropriate for a purpose that's a public purpose, and there are a number of them listed. That's often, that's determined by the legislature and the authorizations that the cities have, and ultimately determined by the courts. The second form of that is the purpose must be one that the city itself is authorized by law to undertake. A number, these, uh, nonprofits appear to me to be some who undertake activities that the city itself is authorized to undertake. But it may be that some of these, uh, organizations undertake activities that the city itself is not authorized to, uh, to undertake. So in order to address that problem, what you have is a contract with the, uh, nonprofit to ensure that the funds are used for public purpose, and that is, it is an authorized public purpose the city itself is authorized to engage in. The contract will need to, need to set out what the funds can be used for and require that the nonprofit report back to the city with respect to the expenditures, so that the city can ensure that they're being used for public purpose and authorized public
So we, we, in my estimation, we have about three issues here on the table. One is some challenges that Councilman Daughtry has with some previous practices. Um, but what we have is a motion on the floor, really, as it relates to item thirteen.
Oh, with the question.
With the second, so, um, I think we can deal with them in a separate manner. So with that said, so as it relates to the constitutionality, your position or your opinion is that it ties to the public purpose, city is authorized by law to undertake, where the fact, the fact that's not the case, um, is resolved via a contract with the entity which is proceeding.
That's right, and they, they need to be, they need to be safeguards in there.
Okay. So, Mayor, so with that said, you know, but if there's any other discussion relative to that matter, then, then let's have it, otherwise.
Well, that, I do continue discussion. The way I read it in our packet, first of all, Madam Manager, says the city of Rocky Mount CBG public service allocation for FY nineteen twenty was eighty-four thousand. City has received nine proposals, and it goes on further on and says, "The total amount CBG funds obligated for public service activities must not exceed fifteen percent." It doesn't say it has to be fifteen percent, it just says it must not exceed fifteen percent. And then, and then back to the city attorney, um, I, well, I don't know if it's the city attorney or Madam Manager, but the contracts, did we have contracts in previous years? Have we followed up with those contracts? Have they reported? Have we seen, um, verified financials that have been audited? And are we ensuring that the money that the public is spending, have we made sure that it's spent on what the hard-earned taxpayers, whether it's CBG taxpayers, or whether it's North Carolina taxpayers, or whether it's city of Rocky Mount taxpayers, is it, is it being spent as we requested?
Uh, so, uh, let me answer your second question first, and yes, because HUD comes in and monitors what the city does, and, uh, we are in good standing with, with HUD. While you're correct, it does say up to. However, if you will look at the funding requests that come in to the city to support the nonprofits, it always far exceeds the amount of money that we have available to them. And so that is why we go to the limit, the fifteen percent allocation that we can provide, uh, to the requesting agencies. I think, um, this year, uh, the total amount of the requests was over two hundred thousand. Uh, they were seeking two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars in funding. However, we only had, uh, based on the formula before us, up to the fifteen percent, eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars to distribute. And so that is why the recommendation is for eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, related to the issues of constitutionality, I think that was such an issue that'd be an issue across the country and not isolated in Rocky Mount. Rocky Mount is not doing anything differently than any other city in this country. As we're adhering to federal requirements and standards, then there is nothing to discuss. Um, secondly, related to, uh, the targeted attack on Rocky Mount Edgecom CDC, um, it's interesting that this is the only entity that's being funded that is actually built housing for against the CDC. And I'm ready for both, sir. And can we?
I will call for the vote. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
One opposite opposed, uh, Councilman Daughtry.
I have one comment. Allow me, I wanna take three minutes. I just want to say I wish we could fund more than fifteen percent, because when we look at them, United Community Ministry, that's dealing with homelessness, and we don't know when one of us may end up in that situation. Rocky Mount Edgecom CDC is with housing foreclosures. We never know when we're gonna end up in that situation. Boys and Girls Club without youth, Ripple Effects with women and children in crisis, and Bassett Center as well. I think these are all good organizations, and you all done a great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item fourteen is consideration of modified time parking limits. Here the event centers presented at the committee of the hall on April thirteenth, twenty twenty. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Uh, do we need, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Joyner, second by, uh, Blackwell. Uh, do you have a presentation you'd like to back to us? Any specific questions on this matter that we need to talk about? All right, that being said, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, item fifteen is consideration of request to apply for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program, otherwise CESF grant, for one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to be used to purchase personal protective equipment, supplies for cleaning work areas, gloves, masks, and training involved with fit testing of the N ninety-five disposable mask. The recommended action is to authorize staff to submit application on behalf of the city, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentations, certifications, subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city. So moved by, uh, Councilman.
So moved.
Second by, uh, Miller. Is there a need for discussion?
Please.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Bullock?
One hundred percent in favor of it. We have seen on TV and heard, uh, not enough supplies here, overrun over the next place. Do we have any way that we can have to say or a comment, a petition, or maybe even a person from our city that might be active in that, moving to that? We all think we're all, thank you.
I'll defer to the manager, and you may wanna hit the mic so that those who are watching can actually hear, yeah, the button, yeah.
I would just like to, knowing this process that no one's believed with, kind of fear, I would just like to see if City of Rocky Mount or National Edgecom County would like possibly have a place on the board on the motion, however this is gonna be funded and however we might see our speed and the results that is supposed to remain for our town as well as others all over.
Yes, sir, I believe that this is actually to allow our staff to, uh, seek grant monies for digital protective equipment, and should there be, uh, motions there, I'll defer to the manager, but I believe that, um, she would include city council of citizens that she would feel outside of, of her range.
Uh, yes, sir, so these are funds that have already been set aside for the city of Rocky Mount as a result of the, um, pandemic. However, we have to go through an application process, and so this authorizes us, uh, to submit the application process in order to receive the funds.
Does that satisfy you?
Yes, thank you.
Is there additional comment or questions? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, item sixteen is consideration of request to apply for Rocky Mount Community Foundation Grant, twenty thousand dollars to assist with the renovations at Battle Park. Recommended action is to authorize staff to submit application on behalf of the city, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentation, certifications, and subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city. Moved by Blackwell, second by Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, item seventeen is consideration of bid for design of sidewalk project award to S C E P I, Inc., at a total of one hundred and forty-three thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. City will be reimbursed eighty percent by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The study area includes sections along western Raleigh Boulevard and South Winston Avenue. The recommended action is to award bid as recommended and authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute contract on behalf of the city. Is there any motion? Moved by Daughtry, is there a second? Second by Joyner, is there? Is there a need for discussion? Councilman Walker? He said aye, okay. All right.
On the, on the second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh, item eighteen, are there appointments of various openings and vacancies within various committees? Are there any to be brought forward, this council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've seen it before, I don't see it listed here today, but I think there's an opening for, for Coastal Plain, um, council governments, or I'd like to nominate Councilman Richard Joyner to serve in that position.
Um, sure, can we table that and confirm that there's an opening and then go down there, right?
Is there an opening?
Uh, my understanding is that there's not, it's currently being filled by Councilmen Knight.
Oh, I get evil.
But, but I don't, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know what I know.
And, oh, as an alternate, as an alternate.
If there's an alternate position, I would consider that, so you want to, I'd go to, I'd go to, I'd go to.
So can we just table that till we know what we know and then bring it up to the next round?
It's an alternate, so I second that motion. City clerk just confirmed it, second the motion. I second the motion.
Is there any for discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Now can we confirm that?
Second the motion. I'm on the board, second the motion, all the time. Welcome to the board.
All right. Uh, all right, now, item nineteen takes us to close the session.
Second.
All right. Uh, we're going into, for an attorney-client privilege matter, uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Joyner and seconded by Councilmember Knight, I believe. Is there, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. These mics are live, and...